Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. The Smithtown Planning Board is now in session. Would you join us for the Pledge of Allegiance? Jim, please.
The flag of the United States of America. To the republic where it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We thank you. All right.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the Board. The first item on the agenda, the Planning Department recommends the following items for adjournment as we have insufficient information to act upon them. Part one, item one, number 2011-01, All Seasons Motor Lodge. Item two, number 2012-04, Storybook Homes. Item three, number 2012-02, Carlson Associates. Item four, number 2009-05, FB4 Realty. Item five, number 773, Scholar Estates. Item six, the 288 application of Olivia Estates. Part two, item seven, number 2010-06, KVC Holdings. Item eight, number 911A, Glen Hill Northern. Part three, item 12, number 1094 Mystic Falls. Item 14, the TDFR application of VIP Real Properties. Mr. Chairman, these are the items the Planning Department recommends for adjournment.
Thank you. Is there anyone here to be heard on those items to be adjourned? No adjourned items?
Yes, I'm adjourned.
Which one?
On 2012-04, Storybook Homes.
Which one is it?
Number two.
Which one?
Hi, my name is Dennis Laskala. Yes. Regarding Storybook Homes in Wisconsin, item 2012-04, this is about the fifth, sixth time that this item has been adjourned. And we're just curious, as residents of this area, what information is pending that you're waiting for before a decision is being rendered? And what is that information that's going to weigh your decision one way or the other?
Let Mr. DeRubis fill you in.
Okay. I met with the applicant actually today to go over some of these items. First item is, is that there was a petition that was submitted in relation, that was against this particular application. And under state law, there are provisions that would kick in in terms of how many votes are needed to pass on this particular zone change if that petition meets the prerequisites stated under state law. That's been reviewed and was referred to the town attorney for determination, and that was completed last Friday. I met with the applicant this morning, or this afternoon, rather, to go over the, some of the final points with regard to his environmental assessment and where he will be going. He indicated to me that based upon the, the way the public hearing was mentioned, he met with the Suffolk County Health Department, and they are doing a study, or he is doing a study or paying for a study, with regard to the water quality, the impact that's going to be on that site. And he is sending a letter to this board asking for an adjournment until such time as he completes that study. The, that's where we stand as of this afternoon.
Does he have a timeline of when that's going to be completed?
Well, the decision for a zone change is a legislative act, and there's generally no timeframe under state law.
What about, what about the environmental study? Is there any timeline when that is going to be completed?
Well, he is requested, well, he has requested time to answer that charge. If you recall, there was some issue with, raised with regard to the impact on this to the water, Suffolk County Water Authority property, the well water. So, he said that he has engaged Suffolk County Water Authority and is going to be paying for some sort of study. And so, until that information is received, this board, well, it's up to the board, but I don't think the board will act until that information is brought forth.
It's been six months now. Has he been dragging his feet getting this information to the board to keep this open?
No, the, for the, after the public hearing was, we received the petitions, and we just finished with the analysis of the petitions. Because what happened was, they were in several parts, and we had to verify who lived where, and that took some time to do. We received them over the summer, and we simply did not have the staff time to go. There were 600 people on that petition.
I think it's up to 900 now.
Well.
It's continuing.
Okay, well, the petition that was submitted to us, which was multiple parts, we had to go through, and then we had to verify who lived where. There were some duplicates, we had to eliminate those. And quite frankly, during the summer, we don't have the staff time.
Understood.
To take, take care of that. But that was finished, and our analysis is given to the town attorney, who has yet to rule on this particular matter. But I did meet with the applicant today to let him know that we are prepared to go forth with this particular application. And that's when he told me that he had engaged Suffolk County Water Authority to do the study. And what I basically said, he should notify the board of that, and he said he's going to submit something in writing to that effect.
Okay. In regard to the zoning board, is this information needed for you to render a decision? Where, do you need to have that decision, that information now to make your decision submitted to the board?
What happens is, the, the Planning Department there puts the whole package for the application together, and then we have the hearing. When there was a, when there was an adjournment on this, it was a lot of questions brought up by the residents, and so those have to be answered in order there for us to rehear it again.
Okay.
Okay.
So, any timeframe, it's still up in the air, we'll still do this month to month?
I don't think you're going to, what he is asking to do, the kind of study that he is asking to do, is not going to be ready for at least six to eight weeks, just to, just to do the water quality sampling that is necessary for that.
Okay. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. However, I will tell you, since I will be asking the board, if we do decide to go ahead with this, because he's sending a letter, I informed the applicant this afternoon, that I will be requesting that the property be reposted with sufficient and re-advertised if we're going to act on this in, in a timeframe, so you don't have to keep coming back, you will receive adequate notice on this.
Okay, appreciate that. One quick question regarding that, for clarification. From what I understand, in layman's terms, the septic tank that they have can hold 14,000 gallons or whatever.
That's, that's the processing unit.
The processing unit.
Yeah.
Now, from what I understand, once a processing unit gets up to 15,000, New York State is involved, and they have to do their own study?
No.
Is that true?
Basically, Suffolk County Health, you're getting into a complicated area, but I'll simplify.
The reason why, the reason why I bring it up is, the plans that I have and I've seen, their processing unit holds 14-plus thousand gallons a day and so forth. But that is the current unit. Under Section 9 of their petition, they will already have, if this is approved, they will already have the opportunity to build more units without any other approval by the board, which will now bring that level well above that 15,000 gallon, which would also be an issue with New York State.
You are, you, this is a zone change process. There is another process that the applicant has to go through, which is called the site plan process. That is very specific, both processes are very specific as to what is approved, including unit number and the capacity. That will all be ascertained. It is impossible to increase the number of units without going, restarting the process or restarting parts of that process again. So, if this board, or the town, or, not this board, if the town board finally, just say hypothetically, approves an application, and they say 40 units, X amount of square feet, and they go down to the gallonage flow, the town board has done this in the past, then that is the maximum that they're permitted to build regardless of the capacity of the plant. So, the plant may have more capacity, but the limitations may be placed on by the town board. That's exactly what happened to the apartments that you see on Lanning Avenue. There was a gallonage, specific gallonage flow, and the applicant has been trying to argue on that particular one, that his denitrification system has excessive capacity, which we acknowledge, but the town board limited him to what he may build there in terms of density. And unless we change, come back with a new zoning hearing, you cannot increase the density of that, even though he has the capacity to do that.
Okay. Thank you for your clarification.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Yes. You're going to do something additional, you're not going to repeat what he said?
No, 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 no. Dave Hungerford, 352 Lake Avenue South, H-U-N-G-E-R-F-O-R-D. The petition, we, I, the petition that we're more concerned with right now is, it was, we were told that if a certain percentage of residents that live within 100 feet, we, then we'd need to incur a, a supermajority vote. Has that petition been approved for that yet? You mentioned that, that yesterday it looked like everything was in order for a interpretation to be made, that's...
As it stands now, well, with the other gentleman previously said, we had a petition of 600 people. If it's up to 900 people, that changes the game plan. So, I'm answering only with the petition that we have officially on hand, and that is with the 600.
Okay.
It is a couple of percentage points short of the 20% necessary. And we mapped that out and gave it to the town attorney, and the town attorney makes the final determination.
We, okay, so maybe, we thought that you needed 20% of those residents that live within 100 feet. Not, there's not 600, but there's not 600 residents that live within 100 feet.
We haven't mapped out, and if you would like to come to my office.
Okay, perfect.
You may take a look, it's not secret documents. We will show you how we mapped it out. If there is an error in the petition that we have, or anything else that you would like to submit, by all means, please give it to us. This is a legal proceeding, and we will treat it accordingly. We map it out, show with the town attorney what we have, the town attorney makes the final ruling. And it's to your advantage to come in and take a look at it.
Okay.
Just make an appointment to see Elaine Leonard on my staff, and she'll be happy to show you the documents that we sent to the town attorney.
Okay. And your normal business hours are, just for...
Nine to five.
Nine to five, okay.
Monday through Friday. If you could call in advance, it'd be the same day, the person will be there, and the documents will be there for you when you arrive.
Okay. Thank you.
Any questions there that you want on that application for details? If you want to contact Mr. DeRubis at the office, he'll explain everything that's going on there in the application, okay? Okay? Okay. Thank you. All right. Blaze?
You have to adjourn the item.
It has to be adjourned, right?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn the items. Read.
Second, Ted. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? So ordered.
Mr. Chairman, we'll now move on to part three of the agenda, item nine, number 1141, Cahill Orchard. The applicant is requesting a six-month extension of the conditional preliminary approval in order to obtain more time to comply with the requirements of filing for final approval. The map of Cahill Orchard, number 1141, was granted preliminary approval by the Planning Board on September 21st, 2011. The Planning Department has no objection to the request. The Planning Department offers the following resolution for the Board's consideration. Be it resolved that the Planning Board hereby grants a retroactive extension of time to the conditional preliminary approval for the subdivision known as Map of Cahill Orchard, number 1141, from September 21st, 2012, to March 21st, 2013.
Is there anyone here representing the applicant?
Vincent J. Tramaco, 1038 West Jericho Turnpike, Smithtown, New York. Obviously, I have no objection to the extension. Thank you.
Welcome. Anybody else here which is to talk on this? Hearing none, a motion for a retroactive extension on Cahill.
Motion to grant a retroactive extension of time to the conditional preliminary approval for the subdivision known as Map of Cahill Orchard, number 1141, from September 21st, 2012, to March 21st, 2013.
Second. All those in favor? Aye. Aye. Opposed? So ordered.
Mr. Chairman, we'll now move on to item 10 under part three, number 1062, Mill Run Estates. The applicant requests to extend the performance bond for a period of two years to expire on September 25th, 2014, in order to obtain more time to complete construction and all necessary improvements. The applicant received conditional final approval for this four-lot subdivision from the Planning Board on November 15th, 2006. A performance bond estimate in the amount of $111,440 was approved by the board and subsequently signed by the chairman. The applicant submitted the bond monies and all related materials to the town, and the town board accepted a passbook in lieu of a, of a performance bond on April 26, 2007. Planning Board approval for this performance bond expired on September 25th, 2012. The applicant submitted a performance bond extension application on August 30th to the Planning Department, and the application was distributed to all departments concerned for review. The engineering and highway departments have no objection to the performance bond extension request, and have determined that the bond amount is sufficient to cover all remaining improvements. Planning has performed an onsite inspection of the subdivision, and has determined that the applicant has not completed construction of all the homes. Additionally, not all the required public improvements have been completed. The applicant must install the second lift on the road, plant street trees, and prepare the final as-built surveys for the subdivision. Therefore, the Planning Department has no objection to the applicant's request. The Planning Department offers the following resolution for the Board's consideration. Be it resolved that the Planning Board hereby approves a retroactive extension of the performance bond for the subdivision known as Mill Run Estates, number 1062, for a period of two years to expire on September 25th, 2014.
Thank you. Anyone here representing the applicant?
Yes.
If you give your name and address, please.
James Fuller, 10 Winmar Way, Center East, New York.
You understand there what?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Everything sounds good to me.
Okay. Anyone in the audience? Hearing no one, a motion there for the retroactive extension of the performance bond for Mill Run.
In a matter of Mill Run Estates, number 1062, I move that we adopt the resolution as read in accordance with the recommendation of the Planning Department.
Second. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? So ordered.
Mr. Chairman, the next item on the agenda under part three, item 11, number 1053A, Berg Estates. Mr. Chairman, this application was brought before the Planning Board at the September 19th, 2012 Planning Board meeting, at which time it was adjourned, pending an onsite inspection by the board. I believe all the members of the Planning Board have completed their onsite inspection, and we have prepared a resolution for the Board's consideration. Be it resolved that the Planning Board hereby approves the request of James Fox, Doing Business as FMF Properties LLC, to waive the requirement of constructing 539 linear feet of sidewalks within the subdivision known as Berg Estates, number 1053A. And be it resolved that the Planning Board hereby approves the request of James Fox, Doing Business as FMF Properties LLC, to amend the conditions of final approval to change how the conservation easement located behind lots 1, 2, and 3 will be delineated within the subdivision known as Berg Estates, number 1053A. The applicant shall install 18-inch bollards containing signage at the rear corners of lots 1, 2, and 3, and one 18-inch bollard with signage which identifies the conservation easement as the Town of Smithtown property at the center of the rear property boundary for all three lots. In total, the applicant will be required to install six bollards with signs along the rear property boundaries for all three lots, as depicted on the sketch prepared by the Planning Department dated September 19th, 2012.
Anyone here representing the applicant?
James Fox, 152 Highland Drive, Kings Park, New York. Thank you very much, and I'll get all that stuff done for you. Appreciate it.
You're welcome. Anyone here to speak on this? Hearing none, a motion to approve there the, the condition, the, the condition for Berg Estate, please.
Motion to approve the request of James Fox, Doing Business as FMF Properties LLC, to waive the requirement of constructing 539 linear feet of sidewalks within the subdivision known as Berg Estates, number 1053A.
Second. All those in favor? Aye. Aye. Opposed? So ordered. We thank you.
Mr. Chairman, the next item on the agenda under part three, item 13, number 2012-07, Tim Yin. The Planning Board will conduct a public hearing this evening, October 3rd, 2012, to consider the above referenced petition for a change of zone from R10, residential 10,000 square feet minimum, to neighborhood business to permit an office for a dentist with an accessory apartment. The site is a .28 acre parcel that fronts Jericho Turnpike, New York State Route 25, and Walter Court. The site is developed with a single-family residence for which a special exception from the Board of Appeals for a home occupation was approved for a previous owner. The applicant is requesting a change of zone from R10 to neighborhood business to permit an office for dentist with an accessory apartment. This is a request to amend the comprehensive plan. The subject site is .28 acre lot fronting New York State Route 25, zoned R10, and developed with a single-family home. At the inception of zoning in 1932, the site was part of a strip along both sides of Jericho Turnpike, zoned for business uses. In 1954, this site was the eastern portion of a larger site with approximately 313 feet fronting Jericho Turnpike that was rezoned to residential use in conjunction with the rezoning of what is now known as the Mayfair Shopping Center to the F Commercial District that was done under petitions number 54-4 and, and -5. Subsequently, Walter Court was established, having residential zoning on either side of the street, with the subject site becoming a separate lot on the east side of Walter Court, part of the map of Mayfair Park, case number 113. In 1989, under petition number 89-10, the site on the west side of Walter Court was rezoned to professional business. To the north is Jericho Turnpike, and north of the roadway is property zone Wholesale and Service Industry and Neighborhood Business, and developed with counter-service restaurants, retail offices, and a nursery. Farther east on the north side of Jericho Turnpike is the Mayfair Garden Apartment Complex in the RMGA zoning. To the south in R10 zoning are single-family residences, and to the southwest there is a school. To the east, there are automotive repair facility, retail businesses, and the Mayfair Shopping Center in the central business zoning. To the west, there is a single lot zoned professional business, developed as an office, a lot zoned R10, and developed with a single-family residence. And immediately west of those lots is property zone WSI, and developed with a filling station with a convenience store. The petitioner is requesting a change of zone to the neighborhood business category, which the building zone ordinance under section 322-7C4 describes as, "intended to encourage moderate intensity retail office and service development and uses which are compatible in scale and character with, and are designed principally to serve the needs of the adjoining neighborhoods, and are adequately buffered from residential, residential districts." The use proposed by the petitioner is a professional office, an office for a dentist with an accessory apartment. This property has been, being used as a residence and office by dentist with approval from the Board of Zoning Appeals as a home occupation. The use proposed by the petitioner is different from a home occupation use in that the professional using the office would not be required to live on the premises, and the area for the professional use is not limited in size, that being 400 square feet. There are three main issues for consideration in respect to this petition. How the requested zoning might affect the character of the area, whether there is a need for the requested zoning category in this location, and whether a less intensive zoning might be appropriate for the site. The Board should consider the potential impacts on the character of the neighborhood. Although surrounded by commercial zoning districts along its Jericho Turnpike frontage, the subject site is, also fronts on Walter Court, which is residential in character and is the entrance to a large residential neighborhood. A commercially zoned lot at this location could alter the character of the street and adversely impact nearby residences. Additionally, the specific zoning requested in NB, which could adversely affect the character of the area because of the types of businesses permitted, convenience stores, banks, bars, and similar commercial uses, and because of the less restrictive site requirements permitting the building to occupy up to 50% of the lot and requiring only 10% of the lot to be landscaped. Pursuant to section 322-7C4, the Board will want to assess whether the proposed rezoning will be incompatible, will be compatible in character with adequately buffered from residential districts. The Board will also want to consider whether there is a need for the requested zoning category at this location. There is ample zoning to provide for the retail needs of the, of the adjacent community, with convenience stores to the north and west of the site, and the Mayfair Shopping Center, a community shopping center in excess of 100,000 square feet immediately to the east. The Board should consider whether the proposed NB zoning will be appropriate or needed. Finally, if the Board is considering rezoning this parcel, the Board should consider whether a less intensive zoning category might be more appropriate. Specifically, professional business zoning, a low-intensive business zoning category, was created to provide a transition from intensive commercial uses to residential uses. PB zoning has been approved on the opposite corner of Walter Court, and that development appears to have served as an effective transition from commercial to residential uses. PB zoning pursuant to section 322-7C1 is intended to encourage low-intensity office development of single-family residence character, where an office residential pattern is appropriate between central business districts and residential neighborhoods. In both NB and PB zoning, an office and an accessory apartment would be permitted. However, in the PB zoning, the building is limited in size to half of what can be permitted in the NB zoning. More landscaping is required on the site, and the building must appear as a residential-type structure in order to match the adjacent residential neighborhood. The Board will want to consider whether approval of the less intensive PB zoning might better serve the needs of the residents while still permitting the uses requested by the petitioner. The Board may wish to make an onsite inspection of this location and the surrounding area. And, Mr. Chairman, since the, this memorandum has been drafted, the Planning Department has received comments from the Suffolk County Planning Commission, copies of which have been given to all the board members, basically stating that Suffolk County Planning feels it's a matter of local determination.
Thank you. Representing the applicant?
Vincent J. Tramaco, 1038 West Jericho Turnpike, Smithtown, New York. I represent the applicant, Tim Yin, who's standing to my left. I'm just going to move over to the, to the post of the Board, then...
Mr. Tramaco, pull up the microphone. Oh, sure. Right here.
As Blaze indicated, the area surrounding, and this is the, the diagram that was prepared for the rezoning, and you can see that if you go and look from my client's property to across the street, Jericho Turnpike, you'll see that all those properties, starting with Dunkin' Donuts to my left, to the lawyer's office, and then you have Sleepy's, and WSI, that's Starbucks, and then over further, there's an NB zoning, and that's Thrifty Beverage. Couple of things, I don't, Sleepy's is, I guess, a retail store, and it's in WSI, but that's not my concern. You can see that, to the extent that there is some retail here, as well as two coffee places within 200 or 300 feet, it's certainly, at least on the north side of the property, a very busy bunch of different business uses. And now, if you, if you look on the south side of the road, the Planning Department was correct, in 1989, I think we did that rezoning of the office of, of a house to professional business. Also, next to the professional business, and I don't think I have a, well, I do, it's really Rudy's Gasoline Heaven, and also, there's a convenience store in between. And those are zoned WSI, and there was some sort of a variance granted to Gasoline Heaven's convenience store so that they could, they're basically a retail use. On the other side is Jiffy Lube, and Jiffy Lube is in the CB district, and it's right adjacent to, as you can see... adjacent to, as you can see, the Mayfair Shopping Center. Now, behind these uses are all residential uses, and they all are subject to whatever rules you would have with respect to a site plan and fencing and landscaping and all of the things that are required when, after rezoning is granted. I'm sorry, you can't hear me?
The mic is kicking out.
Oh. Well, that's the mic's fault, not my fault. So, anyway, you can see the house is here. It's, planning was also right, I think in about 1960-something, Dr. Levin applied for professional business. He was a dentist, and he practiced there for, I think, better than 50 years or 47 years. Actually, Dr. Yin bought the premises from Mrs. Levin, and Dr. Lynn, of course, is a dentist, and he would like to practice in that area, and he has gone out to all the neighbors and spoken to them and introduced himself, and pretty much continued the good work that Dr. Levin did for all of those kids and grownups that lived in the surrounding development. The reason why we're asking for neighborhood business as opposed to professional business is precisely the reason that the Planning Department indicated. It's professional business is a lot more restrictive, and I understand it's a transitional zone, and the idea of professional business, I've used it a couple of times when we've made applications, but in this case, if you look at the surrounding area, I mean, Jiffy Lube is right next door to my client's property, and across Walter Court, of course, there's an office, but after that is a gas station, a convenience store, so it's not the type of situation like we might have had on Haunted Road years ago when we did a professional business and, because they were all houses along the strip. So, we think that this is an appropriate application. We asked the Board for its favorable consideration. I think it would be a good idea if you went out and looked and actually saw the type of busy area that it is, and it's certainly not conducive to a one-family residence without the applicant having some other issue or business to take up the, to put up with the noise and so forth of Jericho Turnpike. There isn't any traffic issues, whatever traffic is there has been there for 50 years. So, we asked the Board, again, for their favorable consideration. They should really go out and look at it and see what's there and get a feel for the whole area. The Board has any questions, I'm here, and Dr. Yin is here.
Thank you. Members of the Board? Any questions? Recommendation there for an onsite inspection?
Mr. Chairman, in regards to Item Number 2012-07, I'd like to make a motion to approve the resolution as read by the Planning Department for an onsite inspection.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anybody opposed? Nobody opposed. An onsite inspection.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, we have a few other items under Other Matters under Part Four. Item 15, Number 1043, Yellow Top Farms, Section One. Mr. Chairman, I had sent all the Board members a memorandum regarding the request by the applicant along with your packets last week. Just to give you a very, very brief description of what the request is all about, Yellow Top Farms was approved in two sections. The applicant was bonded separately for Section One and Section Two, and inadvertently, in the bonding process, the applicant was actually bonded twice for a certain portion of sidewalks on Placed Avenue within Section One. What the applicant is requesting is that the Board would release him from the performance bond for Section One, which Planning and Engineering feel would not be an issue because all of the sidewalks on Placed Avenue are covered by the performance bond under Section Two. So, if the Board wishes to have the application brought before them, I will let the applicant know and have them submit the required paperwork.
Anyone here representing the applicant? No one. All right, I guess there is self-explanatory in the text. Any problems there with releasing the performance bond for Yellow Top Farms for Section One? Members of the Board?
None.
A motion to release the bond for Yellow Top Farms, Section One?
If they want to do it now, they can.
I think, no, I think you should advertise for a public, no. We have, this was a policy question for the Board. I think we should advert, our intent was to see if you would go along with it and then bring it back. I think we should, we did not post and advertise this, so the residents should see it, even though we think it's logical. I just, we wanted to get a sense of the Board.
Just adjourned?
Well, it's not a hearing.
It's not a hearing, so...
It's not a hearing. We just wanted to find a sense of the Board if you would go along with us.
So, we don't have to do anything?
If you, if, we didn't want to go through this whole procedure.
I understand.
If the Board just wanted the bonds in place, if you wanted to get...
No, it makes sense, Frank, to...
Yeah, then we'll bring it back officially at the next public hearing, and we'll advertise it.
Okay.
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 Frank, I do have a question. At our, at our last meeting, we had a copy of a letter that was composed by your department to the Town Board in regards to the LWRP for the Nest Acquara...
Yes.
River Wharf. You asked us to look at it before you were going to send it out, correct?
That's correct, yes. I haven't sent it out.
Okay. Again, I don't know what the feeling of the rest of the Board is, but I looked at it, and I don't have, I don't see any problem with you sending out that letter.
Okay. Adam hasn't got back to me yet, so I don't know what the rest of the Board wants, if you want to wait till the next meeting and then...
Well, could we bring it up as Other Matters then, so?
This, anytime you want, but I think...
Because you, because you did write it, and you did say to us to say to you when it should be released, or can, or can you release it, and rather than just having it, you know, sit there?
Well, it's not, I don't think it'll hurt us to wait for the next meeting, because it's not a tight end sort of matter, but I'll be, I'll follow whatever the Board likes to do, but...
What is, what is, the point you're trying to make, Paul?
Well, the point I'm trying to make is, can we release that letter? Right now, the letter hasn't been released. Frank, Frank wrote a letter to the Town Board to see if they would be willing to go through the expenditure of a new LWRP.
That's correct. Update.
Update. And at the last meeting, we received a copy of that letter. The letter hadn't been sent out, and Frank wanted our comments to see if it was okay to send out the letter. So, now we're at the next meeting, and I was just inquiring about, are we going to be sending out that letter? Did any of the other Board members have any opinion on the letter?
Well, the question is there, is there something in the letter that you feel there is important to be sent out?
Well, it was discussed at the meeting that we approved the particular dock situation that you were going to send out a letter to the Town Board in regards to a re-study, if they would go forward with a re-study of the LWRP.
Yes. That's correct.
So, and then you wrote the letter, but I was just wondering, are we going to be acting on that letter by releasing that letter to the Town Board?
If I may make a suggestion, if all the Board members could get back to me as soon as I get, I guess, all the Board members in concurrence, I'll send it out. We don't have to wait for the next meeting. If the Board wants to, in the interim, take a look at it and just email me or call me or whatever, and I'll be happy to expedite the matter. Call me tomorrow, I'll have it out tomorrow.
Any other comments from the Board? Send it out.
Send it out.
Okay. Do you want to wait for Adam? I haven't heard from him, but...
Well, what I'll do is I'll poll Adam there during the week, and I'll get back to you.
Okay. It's, I'll do whatever the Board wants, so, you know, either way, if you want to wait for Adam, or I'll send it out now, so...
It was information that was requested, and it's there, right?
Yes.
All right. So, I don't see any reason not to send it out there, but if we just say, I'll get Adam there and get his opinion on it and get back to you.
Okay, I'll wait till next week to, I guess he'll be back next week, I believe, so, all right.
Okay.
I think we went to this the last meeting, and I think we were supposed to call you back, and I never called, I apologize.
All right.
As long as I think it's just under the Board's consideration, this is the budget time, this is the appropriate time to submit that. The budget was just released to the Town Board this week, so it will be something that they will consider.
Okay.
Sounds good.
All right. Adoption of the minutes for September 5, 2012.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion with adoption of the minutes for September 5, 2012.
Second.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? And you've got the letter from the Planning Commission?
Yep.
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
And the notification for the conference.
Just to let all the Board members know that the Suffolk County Planning Commission has officially announced that the date of the next seminar will be November 29.
Yes, okay. Anything else? Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn?
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So ordered.